I hereby call to order this meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening, sir?
Yes, ma'am. The county attorney will provide those.
Madam Chair, we need to amend the agenda to have a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A1 regarding the discussion of personnel matters, specifically the position of county attorney and the interviews of prospective candidates for the position of county attorney, as well as the position of deputy county attorney.
I move to amend the agenda as presented by Mr. Britton.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miller and Mr. Britton. Public comment. I'll now open the floor for public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Mr. Dines, do you have the timer ready for us, sir? Thank you. And I would just remind you, when it is your turn, please state your name and address. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman. I appreciate it. I'm James Lynch, 8263 Oakwood Drive. I am here to briefly talk about the Greenways Plan that is on the agenda for later on in the evening. When I heard a number of the comments and the discussion that was, that came up after Mr. Clark's presentation. At the last meeting, I realized there were some issues that I needed to learn a little bit about. So I had some discussions with Mr. Miller, appreciate it, and Mr. Granger, appreciate it. I believe, I believe there are going to be some alternatives discussed later on this evening. I've just begun sort of looking at those alternatives and trying to understand exactly where they are and what's on the table. After looking over and looking at the original plan, I believe that the way this process is, which is very early in the game, what Mr. Clark talked about a couple of weeks ago was the culmination of a feasibility study to come up with a concept, and that's it. I would recommend that the board, for now, keep the concept plan in place as Mr. Clark presented it a couple of weeks ago. If there are some issues with that plan and some other issues with the alternatives, there's plenty of time to explore those with both county staff, other involved people, and the highway department. I would encourage, I would encourage the board, for now, to keep the plan as Mr. Clark presented it a couple of weeks ago. And this ends my comments, Madam Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Do we have anyone else here in the audience who wishes to provide public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to online. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone waiting online who wishes to provide public comment? Thank you. Members, did anyone receive correspondence on behalf of a citizen wishing for it to be read into public comment? All right, I will now close public comment and we'll move on to reports of members of the board. Mr. Granger, could you start us off, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just like to say thank you, Mr. Lynch. I appreciate you coming out, appreciate your time as well this weekend to sit down and discuss what your thoughts were and where I stood on it. So thank you for taking your time out and discussing with me. Other than that, on Tuesday, September 28th, we had our CIP work session, our first one. I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission for reviewing and providing recommendations. Like to say thank you to staff and department heads for coming and presenting their needs and helping us to understand what we do need to do for this county as we continue to go through the CIP project. So thank you to all those who were involved in it going. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
Thanks, Mr. Lynch, for coming out. Certainly appreciate all the work that you do for all the programs you're involved with. So thanks for coming out. Wednesday, September 22nd, I attended virtually the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. This one, we talked about some emergency management of flooding and response to floodings and putting up gauges that would alert when floods of the Rappahannock were coming. Emergency response to floods and other things. The, also general health of the river. And the gentleman came from National Park Service and talked about the park rivers that feed down into the Rappahannock. Sunday, the 27th, I helped Friends of Rappahannock with a free paddle event, which was held on Machota Creek. They had about 15 or 20 people show up. It was a completely free event. They will be doing more of those next year, not this year, due to the fall weather. They also have some trash pickups here in King George that they're looking for volunteers to attend. You can check out their website for dates and times. The 28th, I also attended their first of a couple of CIP meetings for this year. And just this evening, a little while ago, I attended National Night Out, which was held this year at Brooks Park over there at the transfer station at the backside. And just say thank you to the sheriff's office and fire rescue and everything that they do for putting on a really good event. Just a really nice evening. Clouds came in, kept it nice and cool. Seemed like it was very well attended at a new location. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender?
Yes, I want to thank all the staff and Ms. Kupka for helping with the Shiloh Town Hall I had on September 22nd, which we talked about Route 3. It was really good discussion. Quite a few people watched online, and I think the rain kept away everybody in the building. But I've talked in the last two weeks to quite a few people that have given feedback as they saw it online on Facebook. So I appreciate that. I have participated in the George Washington Regional Commission's Strategic Planning Session and their executive search, which our strategic planning session was about four and a half hours, but it was some great dialogue. Mr. Miller came with me, and I think it was very positive for that regional approach. I also attended the Dogland Heritage Museum Strategic Planning. They're trying to change their museum to become on a modern, 21st century, more of a virtual presence. And, you know, trying to make it, bring it into the 21st century, I would say would be the best description of it. I also attended the Commonwealth of Virginia DEQ Site Suitability Panel, which I'm honored to be serving on. We have another meeting tomorrow. In that time, I've done a lot of research and reached out to our own staff and other localities because it is very important to make sure we protect our counties and our localities' rights and not have state mandates cost us a lot of money and also take away the rights of counties to decide their future. And lastly, I would like to nominate Jaren Hayes to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee, which is part of the FAMPO Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first off, I'd like to apologize to my constituents for being unable to be in person and attend our first CIP meeting. I was in quarantine with my son, thanks to COVID. But everything's clear now and everyone's doing fine. I did participate online or listen online. So I'd like to thank all our department heads and constitutional officers who presented. This is a very busy time for us with CIP. There's a lot out there, but there's a lot of planning. And I really appreciate the way this board has the CIP process structured, going through it methodically, looking at things and planning for the long haul. So while everything can't be funded, this process starts, and the way it's done is done very open, methodically, and planned out. So I really do appreciate that process. I did point out to Mr. Dines, the call-in number that I used to call in for that meeting on the website was, in fact, incorrect. Mr. Dines is making those updates so that the public will not experience those complications in the future. Madam Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I want to thank you, Mr. Lynch, for coming out tonight and providing your comments. Thank you very much. On Thursday, September 23rd, I participated in a call hosted by Representative Rob Whitman and Three Rivers Health District Director, Dr. Rich Williams. I asked a question, and I mentioned this in my board report for the last meeting regarding increased in mental health and substance abuse issues in our community, particularly among our youth. So I asked about that, mental health issues resulting from the pandemic, particularly among our school-aged population, specifically as to whether additional resources would be allocated to deal with it. Representative Whitman answered the funding question. You're exactly right as to secondary effects. He has spoken to community services boards all across his district, and all of the indicators have gone up considerably as far as mental health and substance abuse goes. And unfortunately, there is not a plan, dollars allocated on the federal level to send to the localities, as we know, he knows, that that is where the demand will be greatest, among community services boards, our schools, our local Departments of Social Services. And he will continue to push for dollars directly to localities to be able to meet these needs. Dr. Williams provided me with a clinical resources answer. He couldn't agree more with the concerns I raised. Unfortunately, every available human resource VDH has was diverted or reassigned to work on the testing, contact tracing, and vaccination efforts in response to the pandemic. The same people do all of that, so direct interventions on all other initiatives are lacking. It will take lots of inter-agency focused efforts when we can refocus our human resources. So the next part, these are my words, the bottom line I took from that is that no one is coming to rescue us. It is going to largely fall upon us on the locality level to work together with our community partners, including the schools, to try to address the many issues that have come about as residual, long-term effects of the pandemic. I want to thank Kathy Dyson of the Freelance Star. This past Sunday, she did a very large front-page article regarding the increase in mental health needs and lack of available providers as a result of the pandemic. I, too, on Tuesday, September 28th, attended the CIP opening work session. I want to thank our staff, Sheriff Giles and Superintendent of King George County Schools, Dr. Robert Benson, for attending and articulating the need for the proposed projects. This morning, I attended the King George County School Strategic Plan Development Stakeholder Meeting. I want to thank them for having me. And I want to remind the community, we started sharing it on social media and the county website, that Community Development is currently conducting a survey. It's open for the entire month of October. You can complete it online. You can complete it in paper if you don't like to go online. Regarding a massive overhaul of our zoning and subdivision ordinance, and there is also information on the county website about the two public information sessions that we'll be having this month as well. And that concludes my report. Move on to the consent agenda, please.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, county official reports, constitutional officers' report. Are there any constitutional officers here? I see Ms. Judy Hart, our Commissioner of the Revenue, is here. Thank you for coming out, ma'am. And I see Mr. Randy Jones, our Treasurer, is here as well. Thank you for coming out tonight, sir. Would either of you like to approach and speak? Please go ahead and do so, Ms. Hart.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Miller, Mr. Britton. As you know, July 1, we started the cigarette tax in King George County. We have 26 stores that sell cigarettes, 12 distributors. And come November-ish, we'll have two more stores, King's Mart, which is going to be opening where Pern's Market used to be, and there'll be another vape store in the Foodline parking lot next to the medical facility there. Sheets is our highest purchaser of, as a distributor, of these stamps. They have purchased over $312,000 in stamps. Our total sales to date is $781,279.60. Deputy Simmons and Deanna and I have been visiting all the stores in the county that have been selling the cigarettes. Of course, all of them but one had violations, and these violations are where they have other cigarettes on the shelves that haven't been stamped. And we've given them instructions, take them off, you cannot sell them, you've got to either send them back to the distributor and have them put stamps on them, or we can sell them the stamps. And we have had three stores to purchase stamps from us and put them on, and the rest of them have sent them back. So I think that's about it for my report for this time. Is there any questions about it?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, Mr. Granger?
I don't have any questions, but Ms. Hart, thank you for coming and brief us on it. I do appreciate the update.
I'll be back when we hit a million.
We're going to hold you to that. Mr. Stonehill?
Thanks, Judy, for coming out. What was that number again?
781, 279, and 60 cents.
And thanks for going out. I heard that you were actually with Deanna and Deputy Simon going out there, so it's good to see you get out there and get out of the office. But yeah, thank you and thanks to Deanna for everything you all do.
Fabulous job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bender, do you have any questions for Ms. Hart?
No, I just wanted to thank Ms. Hart and her staff.
Mr. Bush?
No questions, but one point. So that number, 700 and something thousand dollars in the three-month period. So that's concerning to me, being that we estimated around $4 million in our budget. So just something for us to probably track as we're moving forward, because while the number sounds great, and I know we just started, but we're falling a little short in the overall budget for that. So just something to keep our eyes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, very much for your report. All right, anyone else? We will move on then. Report of the county attorney, Mr. Britton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two matters, one's on the agenda, one's not. You may remember that some time ago, I was tasked with updating the trademarks for the county seal and the county shield. And we did that. And after you do that, they send you this, like Magna Carta-looking thing with a gold seal. And that came in, and so I will hand those to Mr. Miller with your permission to file amongst the official papers of the county for both the county shield and the county seal, which needs to be appropriately used. And, you know, not for unlawful or political purposes, things like that. And also, just to note that we should begin, as we either go forward, we should use the R, in the circle R, because you have to manifest your protection and you have to file some uses showing that you've actually used it. You don't want to acquiesce to someone else's use. In other words, you need to enforce it if there's an appropriate use. You need to put the R on there to give notice to the world that you have a registered trademark. And then we have, there are some filing requirements. So I've noted those here for Mr. Miller as well. They're fairly easy to do, but someone needs to track and say, this is the brochure, this is the 300th anniversary, this is a t-shirt, this is a hat, and this is how we have manifested our continuous use to protect it. You can't get a trademark and then not use it and want to protect it. It's called abandonment. So in any event, that's good news and that's taken care of. The second...
Can we pause on that? Can I, before we go on to the other matter, can I ask my members if anyone has a question with regard to that first matter, please? Anyone? So I actually have a question or a suggestion. Mr. Miller, can you work with Mr. Britton to come up with some mechanism whereby if we have requests from the public, say, I don't know, a group that has an event that got tourism money and might want to use the county seal in the future in their advertising, figure out a mechanism whereby they apply for approval to do so, so that the county is approving anything that we might let someone, you know, grant approval for?
Yes, and I've already drafted a template limited use license, it's called, and don't want to get in the weeds, but I'll send that with a memo to Mr. Miller. And this would be typically a PIO function, so we can maybe assign that if we get a PIO, if that existed. And then we could have that person track that. It would track that through, it could be done through economic development as well, because they put out a lot of stuff and run a lot of events and things. But typically, it would be a PIO function where they would track that and then file all the uses and the reports you give, what are called exemplars, which are pictures of use, and you send them on in in your report to the USPT or the Patent and Trade Office. So it's not a heavy lift, but I have a memo and a template limited use license for Mr. Miller, so he can shoot that out. It's a royalty-free, limited use, can be revoked. You can't use it for unlawful. It has all the words that lawyers use.
Very good. So maybe in the short term, I don't like to add to economic development's load because they already carry a lot for us. Maybe that's a good short-term plan, but if we can work towards some alternative solution in the long term, that would be great.
And I would suggest that, because Nick doesn't necessarily know everything the TAC does, although I think he may know, but he knows a lot of it, but that they report to Nick when they are going to use or permit the use of the seal.
That's a good suggestion. Ms. Bender, did you want to say something?
Yes, because I just thought of something coming up is, I think there are several entities have used our seal in the past. So how would they go about getting the permission? And I'm thinking of the Historical Society, for one.
Well, or that sign behind you, you know, you can put stickers on things, but that's what they would do. They would just notify, put everybody on notice that if you've been using it, you get this limited use license, and this is the new requirement that you've got to use, the circle R.
Okay, thank you.
It's pretty easy for people who are compliant. The more difficult ones are the people who are calling it, like, King George County, Virginia, established 1720 Political Action Committee or something like that, or, you know, vape shop or whatever, and they won't stop. That's the more, I don't think we have any of those, but the infringers. But the other people, the non-infringers, are just going to ask permission and get it. It's not a heavy lift.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. And as for the next matter?
Yes, I was tasked by the board to research and draft up a resolution regarding what financial documents can be, are required under state law and county code, or could be required under state law and county code of the, of the Treasurer, to ensure that there was competent and continuity of services in the financial management of the county. And I did that. There are several state codes that relate to it, county codes, and the board is empowered under state law to require, request from the Treasurer's office that certain reports be filed and on what basis. And the board gave me directions, and I drafted up a draft resolution for your consideration, which is before the board, to ensure that these reports were given to the county finance and to the Board of Supervisors on a periodic and timely basis under both state and local law.
I would, if I may...
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I would just point out that the most up-to-date version of that is at your desk.
Thank you. And it appears it's online as well.
Yes.
Yep. All right, do we have any questions from members or Mr. Britton? Any questions? I do note again, Mr. Jones, you are here, sir. Do you have anything you'd care to share? Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution, financial reporting by the Treasurer as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. You know what, I'm sorry, I do need a roll call vote on this.
It's an enrolled vote, Madam Chair.
Yep, I need a roll call vote. Sorry about that.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Britton.
Nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. We will move on to presentations and reports. 1003A, after-event presentation by Jazz in the Country. And Mr. Dines, can you pull that up for us, please? Thank you, sir. And do we have, is it Ms. Joan Waters?
Joan Waters.
And Larry, Mr. Larry Robinson, on behalf of Jazz in the Country. Thanks for coming out this evening.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. I don't want to forget, we have souvenir festival programs that we'll get to you a little later. While we're waiting, I'll note the issue about the county seal. We interpreted approval of our funding and other discussions that we could use it, so we'll be in touch to find out the permissions that we need.
That's great. You know, going forward.
Yes.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Great. Will I be able to... Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. I hope you can see that. We're excited to be here to report about a very successful event that we had, our second annual Benefit Jazz Festival at Mount Bethel, right here in King George. So the first thing we want to address is the ticket sales and attendance this year, which was a little over 300, including 23 that day. We had attendees from Virginia, 18 different... We had attendees from Virginia, 18 different towns that were non-King George residents, and then 66 from King George. We had 121 from Maryland, representing 28 towns, and 56 from Washington DC. We were very grateful that the Hampton Inn and Suites gave a discount to anyone connected with Jazz in the Festival, and there were 10 rooms that were occupied. And you'll notice as we go through some pictures from that day, just to give you an idea of what it actually looked like on the ground. And so you'll see different performers on that first page. So next page, please. The important thing for our success, we believe, is the marketing that we were able to do with your help. We were all over social media. We were on Google, Facebook, Everfest, several different festival-type websites, as well as the artist websites, and several local organizations here in King George and Northern Virginia. Google had the greatest impact. We spent a little over $1,600 for four ads that showed from the period of May 22nd through the festival. And it reached over 59,000 people. And that means it was, it was showing that many times and over 3,000 actually clicked on it. Of course, we can't tell if they were actual attendees or purchasers or whatever, but the reach was there. We were all over the mid-Atlantic, in Delaware, Maryland, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, West Virginia. So that was a real boost. And we liked that we were able to set up exactly how much we wanted to spend, and we were only charged when people actually clicked on an ad. And there were quite a few people that said that's how they, they found out about us and actually attended the festival. So the next page, we talk about Facebook ads. And this particular stat is from mid-July through August, reaching over 15,000 people, actually reached a little over 20,000 people. We had a social media volunteer that sort of helped us on the side, and her ads reached about 5,000. So what, we wanted to keep it right in everyone's face. So we had, besides the ads themselves, we had posts just talking about the festival, showing the flyers over and over, saying how excited we were and how they needed to hurry up and get their ticket and to be there. And many shared them also on their personal Facebook pages. So those ads reached Maryland, DC, Virginia, again, North Carolina, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Jersey, Georgia, and as far down as Florida. The next page talks about website traffic. And we have 10 individual pages with information right on our website. Basic information about the festival. We have pages talking about Mount Bethel itself, King George County, how to get tickets, who the performers were, how to be a sponsor, guidelines for the festival, and even how to get here with a nice big traffic alert in case there was bridge congestion. And also hotel discounts. So between June 1st and August 28th, we had over 8,000 visitors to our website. Over 6,000 were new people who had never been to our website before. And to the right, you see top traffic sources, over 3,600 were due to Google Ads. So it did pay off to be out there in that social media space. A lot just heard about us through word of mouth and would come to the website to get their tickets or just to see what we were about. Many did not know anything about King George or Mount Bethel or Jazz in the country. So the Google Ads really boosted our presence in the social media. At the bottom is just a repeat of those numbers where it talks about to the left, unique visitors, those were first timers, and altogether. To the right, you'll see top pages by sessions. Of course, they go to the homepage and then they go to buy tickets, get information about purchasing tickets, performance, et cetera. We currently have over 550 subscribers to our website. We have ongoing email blasts to those who subscribe to let them know what we're up to and what we plan on doing. And those email blasts also include links to the Visit King George page. We're trying to invite them and invite them and encourage and entice them to come to King George, not just for our festival, but for other activities. So this page talks about our presence on air. B101.5 FM radio, which I'd never heard of until they contacted us. How did they find out about us? One of the banners on the side of the road. So they contacted and wanted to be supportive. So they did a 50/50 ticket deal for us in August. Their listeners range or live between Fredericksburg and Richmond area. You may be familiar with that station. WHUR is an R&B station out of DC. Their listenership is all throughout Delaware, Maryland, Virginia. They're one of the top R&B stations in the area. And they were so excited that they did a promo, a ticket giveaway for us in August as well. 104.1 is a, one of the largest, probably the largest gospel station in the area as well. They brought a promo van to the festival. They, we bought some airtime with them as well. And several mentioned that's how they found out about us. They have a large listenership, even right here in King George as well. We were in the news. We are friends now with Freelance Star and Recreation News. They did feature articles in August as well as us buying ad space in their publications and online. Excuse me. And I'm sure you saw some of our banners and road signs throughout the area, all the way down to Richmond, thanks to our board member Randy. He was really on the road getting the signs out and the banners. At the bottom of this page is one of my favorite pictures. If you'd scroll down just a tiny bit. And those were attendees having a great time at the festival. Good music, good people. All right, so the next page is a brief overview of the finances. The grant that we received from King George County, which amounted to $15,500, paid for most of the marketing that we did. We actually spent $16,200. We received in cash, which is a combination of the ticket sales, vendor fees, sponsor fees, and over $12,000 in in-kind donations from local businesses that totaled $61,604. And that figure, we calculated as 397% return on that $15,000. Then we sort of break it down to ticket sales. We budgeted 18 and some thousand. We actually sold 19 and some thousand. Our expenses, we budgeted at $46,750. We were a little under that at $43,850. The revenue, as we spoke of before, we had budgeted 48 and we were a little bit over that with $49,467, which gave us proceeds of $5,600. So we're happy about that. Our first go around, it wasn't a pretty picture. But we're learning as we go and really making new business partners each year. So a little comparison between our first inaugural fest in 2019 and this year. In marketing, 2019, we spent $2,600 and change. This year, we spent $16,200. Ticket sales in 2019 were $8,761. This year, $19,411. The sponsors gave $9,454. And that was in 2019. This year, $11,653 plus $12,000 in kind sponsorships. So we'd like to end with what the people say. So as we did our inaugural year, we asked our performers, our attendees, our volunteers, our staff to complete a short survey to let us know how we're doing. So as in 2019, most of those who responded to the survey said they heard about Jazz in the Country about word of mouth. Others by roadsides and banners, you know, social media, our website, newspaper, and radio. So it was all a combination of marketing efforts that made us, or gave us, gave us visibility to those in Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, and beyond. And my favorite comment from a first-time attendee is that Jazz in the Country is the soul of King George, featuring accomplished, high-quality musicians, a must-see event annually. So that's, that's how we feel too. We want to be, quote unquote, the soul of King George. Moreover, we want people to come to King George, not just for us, not just for Mount Bethel, but just to see what the area has to offer. And so finally, in conclusion, we have sort of determined the engaging elements for core marketing. People want to know who, they want to know where, when, and why we're doing it. So number one is who, because we could have a nice little festival and have unknowns and it will not draw the crowd. So we aim to get mid-level, at this point, mid-level performers. And when I say mid-level, you know, they charge a pretty penny to come. And then we have to provide all the back line, all the equipment, all the staging, all the sound, and all of that for them. So we believe that is a very, very important thing as we move forward, the performers that we bring to King George. Of course, the location in King George is Mount Bethel. Everyone falls in love with Mount Bethel. If you haven't been there, you've got to come. It's 75 acres of waterfront property. The weather cooperates. It was hot this time, but it's good. It's good to be by the water. Of course, when it is, and people really perk up when you tell them why we do what we do. And our main reason, of course, is supporting Mount Bethel Retreat Center to revitalize their facilities so that it is a number-one attraction for King George. And we want everyone to fall in love with King George. So that ends our report. Any questions for us?
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Any questions from members? Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Waters, thank you for the presentation, really appreciate it. I'm going to start by asking a quick question. What was the attendance at the inaugural? I know this one, you said it was a little over 300. I don't recall what it was at the inaugural.
It was 120-something.
120. Awesome.
125 or so, yes.
Oh, great, I'm glad to hear that. Clearly a significant increase. And so the statistics on your marketing, I think, show a lot for how you were able to improve that. So congratulations on that. I'm glad that it was a successful event. And thank you for coming to brief us on it, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
Ms. Waters, Pastor Robinson, Mr. Pryor, Randy, you should have been standing up there too, with all the work that you do in the background.
Yeah.
Your, your, your work is not, is not hidden. So I just wanted to say, I talked to a lot of people and they said they had a great time. I mean, what a really great event. Unfortunately, I could not attend. It's always a tough weekend for me, so it's just tough. But it's, it's, it's just, it's great, you guys did what you did. You know, look forward to working with you next year as well. You have a date yet?
Yes, August 27th, 2022.
27, okay, very good.
I'll give you a reminder.
Great.
We'll be looking for you.
And, you know, congratulations on that. Like you said, you know, just so much a better job than the first year, but, you know, trying to work all the bugs out and the kinks out and everything. It's, it's growing pain, so it's, this is definitely the kind of thing that King George needs. I mean, you know, to have this, to be able to advertise this, to get people to, you know, come to the county for an event like this is just great. And, you know, a big live music event like that is just, you know, fantastic, so. Looking forward to it. Thank you for the presentation and thank you all three and the rest of your staff for everything you guys did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender.
I wanted to thank you for your presentation. I'm glad that it worked out. I have to say, I saw a lot of those banners and signs on the roadside. They popped up a lot on the way to Fredericksburg and back. So good job getting that viewership out there so that people can see it. And this is a very positive thing for King George, especially with the numbers going up. And I'm glad you got a lot of, because you got the pre-COVID and post-COVID. And I'm glad you still were able to get quite a few people who want to come out and enjoy jazz. And I have visited Mount Bethel a long time ago to take pictures, so it is a nice location. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for this presentation. If you recall, when we were back looking at the funds, I had questions because of the attendance of the first year and things. And this is why I really appreciate this after-action review, because it shows how you can develop from one year and how things grow. So that might help us in the future be able to put things in perspective when others are asking for money for like events. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it. So I live off Owens myself, off of Jordan Lane, not, not too far. And that evening, I, I heard the music and it sounded pretty nice. So I hung out on my back deck for a little while, so thank you very much. This is great information. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. So thank you all for coming out. I'm a data geek. I love data from having been a grant writer. And this is exactly the kind of thing that we need to see. So then it makes us more likely to want to award funding, both, as Mr. Bush said, to other groups to look at. And, and then, you know, we compare, well, well, this group did this and showed us, you know, they put their money literally where their mouth was and showed us there were analytics as far as how they spent their money and what their reach was across social media, website clicks, and all that good stuff. So that's exactly the kind of things that we're looking for. So thanks very much for taking the time to do this. Thanks again for coming out tonight, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, thank you. We realize that without your support, this would not be possible. When you see the difference in the marketing outreach we had at first go around. So we really appreciate it and we'll be back.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. All right, moving along. Smart Scale Projects Presentation by Ms. Kimberly Wilson, Economic Development. Welcome, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I was here September 7th at the board meeting presenting five possible projects for our Smart Scale round of applications. After some discussion, the board asked me to research two additional projects. One of those projects, we were actually able to combine. And that was the Owens Drive section of sidewalk that Mr. Bush asked about. So VDOT recommends US 301 from University Drive to Route 614, which is Owens Drive. Roadway safety improvements, including crosswalks and pet signal upgrades at both intersections with bike pet accommodations along the north side of 301 to include a crosswalk at Owens Drive with sidewalk extending from 301 to Chatham Drive along the east side of Owens Drive. The second project was a recommendation from Ms. Kapka. VDOT also recommended this project, they were very excited about it. A shared-use path along north, the north side of 218 from Caledon State Park entrance, connecting to the Dogren Heritage Railroad Trail at the overpass of the trail. The only issue with this project will be property ownership. So uh, you know, that's up to the board. We can still submit it as part of this pre-application to the pre-application. And I spoke with Stephen Haynes, and he said that they would dig a little deeper and see if it would be viable or not. There were some current concerns about the project at 301 Port Conway and Salem Church Road. These drawings came to me from David Beal, and he explained that the reason the project did not score well the first time was because we weren't really making safety improvements. We were just extending turn lanes. So this would be a reconfigured intersection to a restricted crossing U-turn intersection. And this was recommended by the study that was done from two thousand eighteen. And the accident summary analysis that David provided me stated that there were twenty-three accidents between two thousand sixteen and twenty-twenty. He, I spoke with David Beal on this project as well, and he stated that we could actually combine these projects and make them one. And then the final project was for the lane extension in Eden Drive. And unfortunately, after talking to David Beal, it will not squel- score well either in safety or economic development. So this kind of rounds up the projects. I know there's six listed, but two of those can be combined. And now I'm at the pleasure of the board. So we can com- combine the Route Three turn lanes, and that would still give us five projects.
All right, questions? Mr. Granger.
So it's, I'm sorry. So there's, as you said, combining those two Route Twos would then set us at five?
Correct.
And five is the number we can put forth?
Five is what we can apply for, but ultimately only four will.
And Eden Drive is the one that sounds like it'd probably be the.
Yes.
Most likely to fall off based on Mr. Beal's information. Okay.
Does that mean that we can't still?
Apply.
Apply.
Yes.
But it just probably will not score very well.
Okay. Uh, I, if we don't have any others, then I, I would say these should be the five. I don't have any questions, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Stonehill.
I don't really have any questions. Can you send this to us? It's on the package, isn't it? I didn't see it. If, if you could just send that to at least me or my, the rest of the colleagues if they're interested in that, but yeah, I mean, if that's fine to combine those two, and if, you know, the Eden Drive's not gonna make it this time, you know, we'll just cut that off. But that, that's all I have.
So just to make sure we're all on the same page, Ms. Wilson, my understanding from the applica- the application process is that these have to be sent in by October fifteenth, right?
Correct.
So we will not have another meeting before then. So we need to determine board consensus and direct staff accordingly tonight. And that's why we didn't do it at the last meeting. We knew this was gonna be the, the, we didn't do it at the prior meeting. We knew this was our last chance to do this. So we will need to come to an agreement this evening, just so everybody is on the same page. All right. Uh, Ms. Bender.
I'm gonna be the contrary here, because I don't agree with the Eden Drive. I, I think maybe that we need to ask what kind of data. Well, I understand it, we would combine the two, it's five, because I think it's really short-sighted from whoever thinks that it isn't gonna score very well on the VDOT side, because that is a potential accident waiting to happen, especially with all the houses that are being developed in the way you cut through back onto 301. So I would like to keep it on there, because I, I don't think, I think it's really important, and I think there's just some short-sightedness or not being able to see the long-term consequences. And I don't pa- passionate about it. I drive it every day, and I see accidents almost happen, and you're adding more cars onto that road, and it's gonna be a problem. And even if it's not a red light, having a turn line or extending the turn lines like at uh, Port Conway and Salem Church Road, which is also important, would be vital. But that's my two cents.
Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Kimberly, just for, for clarity, we're just scoring for our, or we're, we're gonna submit what we can now with the, the combination that we can do. But do we have to assign a priority, like this is our number-one priority? Or we just send these in, they get scored, and then we get told what they're gonna do? Is that, that correct? Okay. So um, awesome. Uh, Madam Chair, I would, I would, I would say, you know, if we could do the combination, we submit what we have. I do, however, want to um, thank everybody, really. Th- this sidewalk extending to Chatham Drive is huge on Owens, especially when the base gets back to full operations, people walking along there. It's just a matter of time of somebody getting hit. This is an absolute benefit to our citizens out there. So I would like to thank my colleagues for that conversation, and that, that's why we have these deliberations up here, is because that's how this came about, was our conversation as a board, and now to see it up here. Thank you very much to my colleagues and Kimberly for making that happen. So Madam Chair, that, I say we submit all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. So I want to thank you, especially Ms. Wilson, for your time on this and pulling everything together and working with VDOT to come to the realization, because I can tell you, in the GWRC and FAMPO meetings, they're, they're putting together these mega projects. And if, as long as they're within a certain amount of space, but a certain distance of each other, you can put them in. And, and so great job on that. Um, I too, uh, travel 301 and Eden Drive every day, probably four to six times a day, depending on which kid I gotta get where or work or whatever. Um, I, so I want to just go ahead and leave it in, and it, and if it turns out it does, it doesn't meet muster, it gets screened out, it gets screened out, and they will provide us a reason why, Ms. Bender. So we'll know pretty clearly. Um, so it sounds to me like consensus is to go ahead and, and submit the five then. And then one will get whittled away, probably, because we can only have four, and then we'll go from there. So thanks again for your work on this.
Right.
All right. Yes, Mr. Miller.
Do you need a, an actual vote on this? Do they need? Okay.
No, we just, the consensus votes. Yeah. So, so once it works through the process, it goes to this part, and then it goes to pre-application. And then when they get ready to submit the, the full application in the portal, that's when Ms. Wilson will have to come back to us, just like she did last time for the, for the board resolution for the uh, King George Middle School Turn Lanes Project. And she'll just have to come back and get one of those from us, once it gets narrowed down to whatever our four are. So that's when, yes, we'll have to have a, a public vote. All right, thanks again, Ms. Wilson. All right. GWRC Regional Greenway Study Presentation by Mr. Miller.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we had representatives from um, GWRC, uh, Mr. Allis and Ms. Gibson that were here and talked about the, this conceptual study. I believe you have a memo from me regarding uh, where we stand at this process um, right now. So there in front of you um, on the screen is a revised map that shows the trail proposal, and it's a conceptual trail again. I think that's very important to note. And what GWRC is looking for was the final input. I think that we've arrived at that. And essentially, what we were attempting to do on this was to um, have the trail deviate or divert around our industrial park. And so at and around Bloomsbury, the plan is that it would just basically go down towards Route Three, and then it would hook up uh, later to the west with the Stafford County plan. And it's my understanding that GWRC worked with Stafford County to connect up with what we're trying to do. Um, and you can see that major deviation, which is our industrial park there. And I think that was an attempting to address Supervisor Granger's concerns. And I, and I would just propose, this is the, uh, this is our version that we submit to the um, uh, GWRC, and, and it's a conceptual study again, twenty-thousand-dollar study that they're doing. It doesn't bind us at all. Um, but it is something, as I pointed out, when you're starting to go forward as a region, looking for money and looking for opportunities, um, you're, you're best being a part of a partnership. Because those, these agencies that provide the money are always looking for the coalition of, of folks. And so um, that's where we are right now. Is there any questions? Be happy to answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Let's start with Mr. Granger, sir.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Miller, thank you. I appreciate you doing the labor work on this. And as I said before, I met with Mr. Lynch, and so I appreciate his time. I am gonna ask, um, so I, I still, I, I, after meeting with Mr. Lynch, I'm still in favor of trying to move around the uh, industrial park. Uh, but Mr. Lynch should ask about the possibility of going down from Route Three down Fletcher's Chapel Road to connect back up to the, the railroad, uh, to go across into Stafford. And so I didn't, I was just gonna throw that out as a possible uh, idea, because I, I think that kind of addresses the, the issue with the industrial park and the concerns that I have there. Um, but then would connect back up to where they originally said, um, they, that Stafford and King George, they were trying to have that connection at. Um, so.
I, I, I will just say, whatever you guys want to do on this, I think that we have to get them an answer back tomorrow.
I understand that. And so I was, I under- I appreciate the challenges that, that presents. Um, so I, I was putting that, that there for my colleagues to consider as well.
If you could give, give me a little bit more specifics, because I mean, we can basically let Ms. Barber, who is the GWRC um, coordinator on this project, know, and they can go in and move things around. It, it wasn't anything of, you know, it wasn't a herculean effort, I can tell you that. They were very amenable, and they, they want to move forward, and so they understand our concerns.
Okay.
So.
It was, yeah, I was going down Route Three, and then from Route Three taking a right onto Fletcher's Chapel Road, um, which is right where Sealston Elementary School is, roughly. Uh, and then she had down there, then it would connect back up to the railroad. I, I don't know, good road to try to identify where it'd be around that. Maybe Country Drive. Okay. Or a little before Country Drive. But that was, that was an idea Mr. Lynch had, and it seemed like a reasonable one to me. So I, as I said, though, I'll leave it to my colleagues, though, as well, to, to weigh in. Um, it's not my decision to make on my own.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
A whole lot of questions. I'm just having a hard time with this map, this little jig that goes around. Richard, maybe you can.
So, oh, I have it up on my screen, in Google Maps. It was going down this way, and then just cutting down Route Three all the way. Instead, it would uh, and so it would kind of go down. Like right around here. So roughly, it'd go down that way, and then cut in that way, which is where the original following that trail line. At least that was the proposal originally. As I remember it.
I mean, the, the, the railroad, I mean, the railroad goes through there. But if I remember correctly, right there, Country Drive, that's the backside of the dump there, isn't it?
That is.
Cause Country Drive runs up and curves around, and the dump is right there on your right-hand side, so they'd have to get through or bind it somewhere.
You'd be going straight to the left, off of Fletcher's Chapel, not to the right, toward Stafford. Away from the dump. Off of the road.
I mean, if it's a straight shot through there, I mean, I would be amendable to have them look at it, but.
I, I mean, I can't stress enough that this is your plan, and if they, if you want to add whatever you want to add, um, this is conceptual. So.
Sure.
I don't know that we need to, um, you know, so I'll take whatever input, and so that we can provide them with something that you're comfortable with. Again, I think that's the most important thing.
If my colleagues want to move forward with the plan as presented, that, that's fine. I was just, I just wanted to at least stress the one concern, so. That's, I'll, I'll leave it to my colleagues to, to weigh in, though.
That's all I have. I said, that's all I have.
Okay, so. Did you prefer one over the other?
Trying to pull up the map.
Okay, I'll come back around. Okay, we'll, we'll loop back around. Ms. Bender.
All right, I'm, I'm just asking, because looking at this map and trying to figure out where Route Three is on this map.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's the yellow.
You see where the blue line from the, comes down, and then all of a sudden, there's a yellow?
Yes.
That's where the change has been made.
Yeah. So it would follow Route Three?
That's, that was in the effort to get it away from the industrial park.
That was where my question comes in.
And dump.
Okay, that makes sense, but my question is the safety? Cause it'd be on Route Three.
That is certainly a good point. I would con- concede that that is a concern, but I, I would also point out that this is a conceptual drawing, and that in ten years from now, or five years from now, if there are funds available, there'll be people that will be saying the very same thing that you're saying. And David Be- Beal, if he's the resident engineer, will tell us, that's not a good idea, so what, let's find another way to design this. And we will say, you're right, let's work through it. I don't think you're committing yourself to anything. I don't think that you're, y- y- this is a conceptual study. This is something to try to tie everybody together, so that the people at the parks, the national parks, or the, or the, you know, whatever, the transited, not the transit, but the Federal Highway Administration that op- have bike and pedestrian money available, that they're gonna see that there's this master plan to have trail that goes from Stafford County all the way to uh, Charles County in, in Maryland, because you're gonna go over the bridge at some point. So I think that's what they're trying to do. They're not, they're not trying to hone it down at this point. And, and I get, you know, the concerns about that, but I think it was, what we did is to try to, you know, get away from the industrial park, because obviously, we don't want to have a major trail go right through the center of our industrial park. That's not gonna be very attractive for, for Nick to sell. Um, and I think obviously you also have the waste management site that you might want to get away from. Um, and then the other thing that you might want to get away from would be the Birchwood site, because Birchwood wants to probably not have something that's out there yet. Because they're not talking about that to us, you know, when we talk about it. They're not saying, hey, I'd like to have a trail, it'd be great to have a trail out there. They're not saying that, so.
Well, I understand it, just, but, but hopefully in the future, when this could be viable, there's money that's available to have it safely completed. I understand. I just was pointing out the thing that I don't know if, has come up, but it's, it is a concern, but maybe magic will happen, and it'll be able to, in five to ten years, be viable on that part. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we do have some things going on with this, um, because twenty thousand dollars is being spent on the study. Whether we get five or ten years down the road and there's changes, um, you know, we should get in a position, a better position now, so that those things don't stifle anything down the road. Now, just looking at this, from my perspective, I don't like it. I, I don't like the idea of linking it to privately-owned land, which is currently the trail, um, the Dogren Heritage Trail, where it deviates, is at the trailhead at Bloomsbury, and then coming down to get to Three, which also ties in to Ms. Bender's concerns about safety. My biggest concern is private property ownership. And even with this concept, I don't want to be ten years in a position that some board had this idea, and this regional alliance came up with this, so the state or the Fed feels that they can step in and utilize eminent domain. I don't, I don't support that at all. I, I'm just one, but I really don't see this greenway network as advantageous to the citizens of King George. That's my personal opinion. I just don't like it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Bush, I'm gonna ask you a question. Where, where are you seeing? Where, where are you seeing that, that either the suggestion brought to us by staff or Mr. Granger? Where is that acquisition of private property?
So based on what Mr. Miller stated earlier, that this is conceptual and that it would run along Route 3, there's private land owned on both sides of Route 3 all the way down. So that, that's where if, if something was to be put in and someone didn't want to sell their privately held land, the only way to acquire that property would be through eminent domain. So that was based on the comments that this is conceptual, meaning that property line could fluctuate.
So I think the proposition here is to do a shared use path on the existing roadway such as like, take, take for instance, Cool Springs Road. When you turn right on Cool Springs and go up Cool Springs towards 218 at that intersection with Deacon, there's it's just a marked bike lane on the shoulder, I think is what, right now, that's all that anyone is looking at. I, I'm just not seeing all this private property acquisition.
I'm not saying that that's all of it. I'm saying that that's something that could be playing into this. So when you let, depending on what this is going to be, they may have to expand the shoulder. Okay, on Route 3, which means they're going to have to cut into off of existing roadway into private land. And, and there are some houses along Route 3 that are very far off. And there are some properties that are actually fairly close to the road. So not knowing exactly where this line is, because again, Mr. Miller said this is conceptual. That's one of the concerns I would have down the road.
So if VDOT wanted to do that, they're going to have to obtain the right of way to do that. And that's factored in, that's part of a, any project cost is factored in. The right of way acquisition to do so. I just, I see it as, yes, you're saying VDOT could just go and do this. Well, no, because the locality has to provide a resolution of support to support this. We can't even get VDOT to to tar and chip our rustic rural roads for us with money that they set aside for us to do that, unless we give them a resolution of support from the governing body. So I, I don't share your concern. I appreciate where you're coming from, but I, I would be okay either, either with the alternative that Mr. Miller brought us this evening or the suggestion that Mr. Granger has. I would be okay with moving forward with either one of those. So I said I would go back down the line, so let's do so. Mr. Granger?
I'm going to ask if, I'm going to say that I'm amenable to either way. So if it comes down to that, that's fine with me. But either Mr. Miller's or my, but my preference, I guess, would be to go down to Fletcher's Chapel to connect back up, to connect into Stafford that way.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
Since they need an answer tomorrow, I should just say we go ahead with the draft that we have right here in front of us.
Ms. Bender?
I agree with the same.
So with, with this one here as presented by staff?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Bush?
I don't like either.
Thank you. All right then, I believe we have four in favor of going forward with this. Mr. Miller? Yep. All right.
Thank you. I'll convey that to GWRC.
Thank you for your work on that. Moving right along, Fred Transit presentation by Mr. Miller.
Okay, so at the, one of the previous meetings, we had the Fred Transit presentation that was done by GWRC. I also have a memo there for you. I had a conversation with Ian Allis, who is with GWRC. As you recall, the, there was really, I think, a very mixed bag of support on behalf of, on behalf of y'all about this. One time Fred Transit was active, there was a route that went to Dogren. They stopped and GWRC had an opportunity to study. This is, you know, did you want to return to that? I have had a conversation with Mr. Hastings, who is kind of the community development liaison for the base. He indicated that it would be very difficult to probably get a level of support for this on the base right now and that there are some logistical issues in terms of where, you know, you would have these people come in. I think with COVID, it's a problem as well. However, what Mr. Allis indicated was what about the idea of approaching Fred Transit about running some kind of a pilot program, some kind of a test program starting in August? To see, to gauge interest, that gives us time to push it out there, get, get the public information out there. So there's going to be a meeting in October, later this month, that I'm going to be a part of and Fred Transit, GWRC and the base folks, and we're going to just talk about it and see if there's a possibility. I mean, if the cost is so onerous, I certainly wouldn't recommend, you know, doing something like that. But if there's a possibility that that Fred Transit can do it with limited costs to the county, then run it for a year or run it for six months and see if there is any interest. And then it's shut down if it's not something that's viable. But they're willing to do this and, you know, that's kind of where I'm at. On it, I know Ms. Cupka had asked me to research it and work with them and you know, I certainly was working with the base folks to get with, with Mr. Hastings and they're, they're willing to try it, but I think going in, I'll tell you this, I, you know, there's that they don't feel that there's going to be a real demand for it. But I think if it's done right and maybe there's some good advertising or whatever, maybe there is some of this. And if we can get past COVID, I think that's another change because you know, that, that's, that's one of the big hampering things right now to it is that one, you're, the base is at, at a limited basis right now in terms of personnel. And then two, maybe a lot of people don't want to get on a bus with 40 other people and, you know, so that, that might be something that gets in the way. But I think it is worth looking at, experiment it, see what's happening. If the cost isn't significant, then see if we can make it work.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Granger? Mr. Stonehill? Ms. Bender?
Yes, I have one concern. As you mentioned, a pilot program and you're looking for data, but if there's restrictions on the base in COVID and it's going to create an unusual just situation, how can you get proper data? That, that would be my question.
Well, and I, I guess I would say that that's probably why the GWRC is, is kind of recommending, put it out there like in August. You know, maybe you're getting past some of this and maybe we're getting back to normal. You know, that, that's, I think, why they're looking at. It also gives them time to kind of put this thing together. You know, I think that's, that, I'm just reporting back.
I got you. That was just one question I had because I was thinking about.
It's a good point and it's going to be something that is going to have to be overcome, you know.
Because what I asked is, at GWRC, there's one of the major drivers was the base. And so that's why I bring it up.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if, if they're relying on on the base for support, even after COVID is gone, if it ever comes away at this point, the numbers are going to be off because I believe a lot of the federal government is going to be maximizing telework in those capabilities. So I don't, I don't see the, the capacity at the base going that way. The other thing, but that's neither here nor there. The big thing for me would be, we're talking about a pilot program. I would like to know what the cost associated with that pilot program would be, especially as those numbers apply to the county. As was pointed out today, we're probably going to, there's a potential of a shortfall in our budget from the cigarette tax based on those numbers. So it, we're talking about pilot and a cost. I know previously, and, and things have changed in the county, but previously Fred Bus was not successful and was not providing a return on investment to the county. So I wouldn't want to put some money up and wind up in the same boat. So I would like to know if they're talking pilot, what are the costs upfront before we were to commit something? Thank you, Madam Chair.
And that is what we will report back.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I literally wrote on his memo, who pays for that pilot program? Yes, so you and I are in agreement on that. So, so do we have consensus though, from the board to at least have Mr. Miller move forward and attend this meeting to, to flesh some of this stuff out and then report back? Very good. All right. Thank you so much for the update, Mr. Miller. All right. Moving on, we have item E, Confederate Monument Presentation by Ms. Donna Hahn, Director of Finance. Welcome, Ms. Hahn.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Miller asked me to put together a presentation for you all to let you know the process that we've been through so far. So what I've done is put together a timeline. On June 1st, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to determine the cost to remove and relocate the monument. On June 3rd, the interim county administrator contacted Historyland for information related to relocating the monument to their location and what their estimated cost would be. Historyland Park estimated it would cost approximately forty thousand dollars to relocate the monument and would designate a location at no cost to the county. A request for, for proposals, an RFP, was prepared. And after getting all the specs in line for that, it was posted to Eva on June 21st with a closing date of 7/21/21. Questions were due back to the procurement specialist by 7/14/2021. At that point, on the 14th, no questions had been received. And I made a call to the Virginia Department of General Services, who has also been involved in taking down numerous monuments. And so I reached out to them, got some information and we changed the closing date to August 11th and sent the RFP to other prospective bidders. After that, we did receive one proposal from a responsible and responsive bidder. The evaluation committee was selected and reviewed the proposal. On 9/8, the evaluation committee interviewed the prospective contractor and are satisfied that their plan is satisfactory and advised that we should move forward. So at this point, I'm asking for board guidance on how we should proceed with this project.
All right, so first question I have for you. Ms. Hahn, can you make this PowerPoint available to us? Can you email it to us in the morning in case, I don't know, some citizen contacts us and might want it since it's in the public record now? Please, and thank you. All right, so Mr. Britton, well, first, before we get to that. First, any questions from members with regard to the content of Ms. Hahn's presentation? Okay, so do you have a question about the content? Because I'm about to ask Mr. Britton for some legal advice. So Mr. Britton. So my, my understanding is we do, we do have, even though this is not personal property subject to a public hearing, we have a code section from the Code of Virginia in 2020 regarding memorials for war veterans that would require a public hearing to move forward.
The original question, as you know, when we discussed this, was whether or not you needed a public hearing under 2.2-1800, which is the disposition of publicly owned land, real property. I think you might have accidentally said personal property. Real property, and which answer is no. And then the question, we looked at the title, title of the land and the title of the obelisk. And of course, we couldn't determine it. So this property being essentially either the county's property or abandoned property can be moved off of county property as personal property, either as assumed personal property, we don't have title to it, or abandoned property and we don't want it on the property anymore. Those are sort of loopholes to the monument. So what happened was is that Charlottesville litigated this for like four years and they came up with this monument removal statute as a result of this Charlottesville litigation. So basically, if you determine it in abundance of caution, you can hold the public hearing, you can always hold a public hearing and then you'll be in compliance with 1812, the Monument Removal Statute. If you determine it ain't ours, we didn't ask for it, we didn't assume liability for it, we're just getting rid of abandoned property and here's someone who's going to take it, then you don't need the public hearing. But in abundance of caution, hold the public hearing. I think you already heard a lot anyway. It's the most open way to have it and you'll be in full compliance. And then that'll avoid some ancillary lawsuit for injunction to stop it because you didn't hold the public hearing and it really was your property. But can I tell you that a public hearing is required? No. Because I can't tell you that you hold title to it. And in 15.2, 1812, so-called 1812 statute, prior to removing, relocating or covering any publicly owned monument or memorial, publicly owned. I've spoken extensively to Ms. Bender about this. She's very knowledgeable, did a lot of the research on it and we do believe that the better argument, and obviously you're asking my legal opinion in public, so I'm giving it to you. And is that as a result of the county having kept it on the property, I myself have given talks to youngsters in front of it and explained what it was, we cleaned it up a couple of times, that it could be argued that we assumed adoption by, you know, there's all sorts of ratification, ratification by performance, ratification by payment, ratification by keeping up. I think that's the better argument. It's certainly the safer way to go and I don't see a negative to the public hearing. Of course, that's independent of the RFP issue. So I'm, Madam Chair, I hope that answered the, there's no public hearing required under 1800. There's the better way is to go under 1812. But is it circling necessary? No.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Questions for Mr. Britton? No? Mr. Bush? Okay. So how does the board wish to move forward?
I, I would like to, it sounds like it's a little muddy in regards to know whether we need a public hearing and I'd rather err on the side of caution and have the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
I would agree. I mean, even if we don't need one, we're not required to have one. Let's just do one anyways. Just to be overly cautious.
Madam Chair, in response, I know you didn't ask, but in front of Mr. Stonehill's question, I mean, what would happen would be, I mean, not his statement, what would happen would be, and I agree totally, this is a better, better way because you would get a lawsuit for injunction. And then you would litigate over the issue and we'd be like litigating this novel issue about, well, we don't really know who owned. And it'd just be very expensive and it would delay the whole process that a lot of people want resolved. Yeah, just three and a half years, four some million dollars. I'm not saying it'd be exact, but you know, they covered this, you probably know all about that. There were all sorts of intermediary orders over something that I don't think there's an opponent in the ring. I mean, just have the public hearing and move forward based on the public hearing and then you can't have any issues. So then there's no cost to it. It's just a 30-day delay. The statute has some particular requirements of advertisement, as many statutes do, school board budget, whatever, public hearing. But this one is a 30-day requirement. So there will be an advertisement and then a 30-day delay from the advertisement. So it'll give you about a 45-day delay in making a decision on the RFP or what have you. That's a downside. I guess if you don't want it delayed, if you want it delayed, that's an upside. So, but I do think that that is the best advice to, why waste money and time and resources in court over something that you can easily remedy for free?
Thank you. Ms. Bender?
I agree with that, but I just had a quick question, Ms. Hahn. What was the bid amount? Was that in the timeline that it was forty thousand for relocating?
It is under that forty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think without a doubt, we should hold a public hearing on this, especially since public funds were utilized in the past. Approved by this or previous board to maintain it. As far as the request for quote, and that being for the, the one memorial, I still would like to at some point revisit the thought of moving both memorials from in front of the courthouse and co-locating them at at the cemetery, especially given that we don't know what the future of the courthouse is. And I think that's still a way to preserve the memorials and keep them publicly accessible. I think that would be most appropriate. So at some point, I, I don't want to go outside of it, but at some point, if we could revisit that opportunity, Madam Chair, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right then. All right then. So, so 30 days, so, Mr. Britton, we have...
Madam Chair, I think you can request a motion to authorize the advertisement of a public hearing.
So I'm about to get to that. I have a question for you with regard to the timing.
Sorry?
Or when to schedule a public hearing, because I believe we have regular meetings in November 9th and the 23rd, I think? Does that sound ready? Let me double check my count.
1812 statute says not less than 30 days after publication of the notice. The notice requires one publication. So I forget how long it takes, if I wanted to, how long it takes to get it in, like when it will be. But in abundance of caution, I think you should go out beyond 40 days, because we got to get it in.
So should we look at the second meeting in November then?
I would, I just don't know without someone here, maybe Chris does, when can we get it in the paper?
Heather's here, Heather Hall, and she is obviously with the Planning Commission.
Heather places ads for public hearings all the time with a freelance star. Heather, Ms. Hall, would you please provide us with a little bit of insight as far as the publication process goes with regard to public hearing notices?
Our department typically utilizes our public hearing advertisements on Tuesdays, and the deadline is noon the Thursday before the Tuesday that it runs.
Right, so 40 days, because if they get it in Thursday, it's going to be the next Tuesday, and then you got 30 days.
And that's the 10th, 11th, 12th, yep. So November 9th would not cut it for 30.
I don't, unless you forced it and paid extra and all that.
I see what you mean, yeah. So second meeting in November. Yes? Yeah, because we have, we have the 9th and the 23rd. Yep, so, so I'm looking for a motion to direct staff to advertise a public hearing regarding relocation of the Confederate monument. Public hearing date of November 23rd, 2021 at 6:30 PM, is that right?
So moved. If I could add pursuant to 15.2-1812, since the...
Yes, the proper code section.
So moved.
I would like to make a friendly adjustment to that amendment, thank you, to classify it as Confederate Memorial.
It, the code section...
It says memorials, that's why I'm looking at it.
It says monuments or memorials.
Okay, I'm just looking at the code section.
It, it won't matter whether we call it a monument or a memorial, it, they both are covered under 1812.
Okay, just clarifying, because I was looking at it.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Han. All right, action items. Oh, and thank you, Ms. Hall.
Anytime.
For your last. All right, moving on, action items 10-04. Department of Community Development Subdivision Ordinance Exception Request Case Number 21-07-SE01. Request for an exception from the requirements of Article 4 Access Standards per 9.1 of the King George County Subdivision Ordinance made by David A. Norford, owner of Tax Map 5 Parcel 9. Welcome, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, subdivision ordinance special, uh, exception request. Request for an exception from the requirements of Article 4 Access Standards per 9.1 of the King George County Subdivision Ordinance made by David A. Norford, owner of Tax Map 5 Parcel 9. Tax Map 5 Parcel 9 is zoned A2 rural agricultural and is roughly 6.6 acres in size. The parcel is provided access by a private road known as Little Chatterton Lane. July 2021, Community Development received a request for an exemption, for an exception from Mr. David Norford after a zoning determination was made. Mr. Norford is seeking to subdivide the property and create a road off of Little Chatterton Lane to serve two new lots for a total of three lots. The proposed lots are shown with the orange arrows, and the blue arrows show the proposed additional private road. This proposed road will connect to Little Chatterton and Chatterton Lane. Any subdivision of property in King George County must meet the requirements of this King George County Subdivision Ordinance. Subdivisions can be classified as major, minor, exempt, and family. Minor subdivisions are defined in Section 1.7 definitions as follows. Subdivision minor, the subdivision of a parcel of land which results in the creation of five lots or less from a parent tract. Minor subdivisions are required to meet all of the requirements of this ordinance, including Article 6 Minor Subdivisions. The properties highlighted in orange show the properties along or with access to Chatterton and Little Chatterton Lane. Parcel 5 is shown in green, and the blue lines show the road network that is not maintained by VDOTs. The subdivision of land, whether in the past or present, constitutes a subdivision and any road serving it. In this case, Little Chatterton Lane is a subdivision road. Therefore, in order to subdivide any lot further, the road would need to be upgraded to VDOT standards in accordance with Article 4 of our subdivision ordinance. This provision and determination are also in compliance with the purpose and intent of our subdivision ordinance as outlined in 1.2. This provision allows for the orderly subdivision and development of land seeks to avoid undue congestion of land and streets and helps to provide for safe, legal, efficient, and environmentally compatible ingress and egress to properties. This slide shows some of the existing roadways leading to Mr. Norford's property. These narrow gravel roads presumably do not meet any of the access standards. A governing body may grant an exception to specific requirements of this ordinance when the subdivider can meet the following. Would cause undue hardship, and is not generally shared with other subdivisions. And granting of such exception will have no substantially adverse effect on future residents of the proposed subdivision nor upon any property adjoining to such division. It is staff recommendation that there is not undue hardship. The property is developed with single-family dwelling and other improvements associated with the home. Should the board decide that this is a hardship, this hardship would be shared with other potential subdivisions on private roads. Granting of this exception will substantially adversely affect the adjoining properties who maintain the private road. Furthermore, every property on the private road could presumably apply for an exception for the same reasoning and develop each lot along the private roads in King George County, furthering the impacts to a private gravel road that are not state-maintained. Additionally, adding more parcels that will use the road for access would increase the degree of non-conformance. August 10th, 2021, the Planning Commission heard this case and after discussion, forwarded the recommendation to the board of denying this case. The motion carried unanimously, and on August 13th, Mr. Norford notified Community Development that he was unable to attend the September board meeting. King George County Planning Commission, well, I think, yeah. King George County Planning Commission and Community Development staff recommends that King George County Board of Supervisors deny Case Number 21-07-SE01. The application does not meet the requirements for an exception per 9.1 of the King George County Subdivision Ordinance. Available if you have any questions, and Mr. Norford is here to address the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. So I will go down the line first and allow members to ask any questions of staff, and then I will allow Mr. Norford the opportunity to speak as well. So Mr. Granger, do you have any questions?
No questions, but thank you for the report, I appreciate it.
Mr. Stonehill, do you have any questions, sir?
No questions.
Ms. Bender?
I just want to clarify one thing with the pictures of Little Chatterton Lane. Is that basically, just to make sure that my eyes are correct here, is that it is only one car passable?
That is the way I drove it and understood it to be, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bush, I believe this is your district, do you have any specific questions, sir? All right, Mr. Norford, would you like to speak, sir? Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. I was unaware that there's apparently some effort to redo the ordinances.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
How, how does one participate in that?
So there are flyers on the front table here. If, if you would like on your way out, please go ahead and, and take both of them. One relates specifically to the survey and gives you directions on how to participate in the survey. The other flyer mentions the survey and has the dates of the two public meetings that we are hosting in support of the effort. So please do take both flyers. If they aren't there, please let one of us know, and we will make sure to get them to you before you leave.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Well, after my application for a minor subdivision was turned down by staff, I appealed to planning arguing that the requirement to build a VDOT, a VDOT-approved road to access my A2 zone property, which among other issues, would cause undue hardship. This requirement is unreasonable because it would require a state-standard road be built at my expense for more than three-quarters of a mile connecting the driveway of my property to the nearest state road. It's impossible to meet that requirement. And for staff to say that that's not an undue hardship, I'm truly surprised. Other issues I raised were not considered in the subsequent denial. Those were, if strictly adhered to, the specific requirement would cause an undue hardship, as I've said. That such hardship was not aired generally by other previously approved minor subdivisions. In other words, these approvals have gone on in the past. And that granting of such exception will have no substantially adverse effect on future residents of adjoining properties. I would also add that every adjoining property owner had no objection to my request, and in fact, two of, of the three owners appeared in person in my support. During the discussion at the Planning Commission, there were concerns about an element of fairness for my request as a property owner that purchased property prior to 12/17/2002, with the understanding that then-existing rights were grandfathered from the current Section 4.1 Access Standards as they pertain to minor subdivision. During that August Planning Commission hearing, I noted several statements of sentiment from commission members expressing wishes there were some available alternative. Ultimately, they ignored other points, as I have already stated, and simply focused on the ordinance itself and said, quote, "We can't go against our own ordinance," end quote. I'm here to ask that this board overrule the planning denial and specifically seek relief with approval of this one single minor subdivision. The Board of Supervisors of King, King George County has an exemption history, which it used in 2002 when these things were going on, when it exempted two minor and two major subdivisions that were pending when the current ordinance was being discussed and voted on.
There it is.
In the alternative, since the August Planning Commission hearing, being mindful of commission members' comments, I have further studied and considered alternative solutions that, in my opinion, are fair, equitable, and will eliminate possible litigation in the future. In studying the history, I found that in general, retroactive and thereby punitive property laws have been struck down in court cases across the country. Therefore, as an alternative, I ask that the Board of Supervisor return this denial to the Planning Commission with an appropriate instruction to further discuss and consider an amendment to 4.1, the access standards, to wit, adding an Item 1 on Item I, Section 1, that exempts qualified zoning and size property purchased before 12/17/2002 from Section 4.1 Access Standards, Items A through H, as they may pertain to minors subdivisions. There was considerable discussion at that time, what is a subdivision? And when the, uh, when Mr. Green put forward his, his proposal to the Board of Direct, Board of Supervisors, rather, I believe he had, I believe he had in his mind that he was talking about subdivisions, the way we recognize subdivisions to be today, with streets and curbs and all that goes along with those, and didn't consider at the time those of us who have property that we thought, we thought we still had the rights to subdivide for purposes of planning or inheritance or some other situation. So that's my story. This is, there's an element of fairness here and an element of unfairness, frankly, that, and I'm just looking for a way to get something done. And, and I think if you all, instead of just denying outright or send it back, I'd like to have an opportunity to discuss this further with the Planning Commission. I'd also like the idea that I, maybe if you send it back, you don't make me pay another $900 fee to appear before the Planning Commission, because that's what I had to pay in order to present. I had to pay, write a check for $900 simply for the right to appear before the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norford. Questions for Mr. Norford? Mr. Bush, do you want to start, since it's your district? Do you have any?
I, I have some questions for Heather, but, thank you, sir.
Ms. Bender?
I have questions for Heather also.
Mr. Stonehill? Okay, Mr. Granger, no? All right. Thank you, sir. You may be seated. Ms. Hall, please, and thank you. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, can you pull those slides back up? The one with, I have a gravel roads. Yes. So I live in a current similar situation. Jordan Lane, my driveway is horrible, it's one-lane gravel road. So I can understand those concerns, but I had to sign a, an agreement with my neighbors that all live along that road, you know, that we would maintain it and things like that. So is there, so question, is there such an agreement between all the neighbors on this road? And if all the neighbors are consenting to this, that would really help my position in further deliberating this. So, sir, has something like that been provided to the Planning Commission or to Community Development? Or is there a record of such an agreement?
There is a record that is filed with the court at the court. Or we maintain our roads ourselves, we pay into it, we pay every year, maintain our homes.
And, and, and that's where I'm kind of going with this. So with there being an agreement between all the neighbors that utilize these roads, and everyone has basically a cost share into that maintenance. If the people within that agreement are willing to go on the record without any objection to this being done, especially given how long this has been under ownership and prior to the ordinance being in place, et cetera, et cetera, I would, I would be in favor of approving this. I would be in favor of approving this. But I would, I don't know, Madam Chair, what the protocols would be if we would table it until something could be provided, an official record or whatever, because I would want to see, one, that agreement, and, two, that the people that signed on to that agreement have no objection to this moving forward, then I would actually support it. But until I see something of that, I really can't make a decision one way or the other, Madam Chair.
So Ms. Hall, is there a road access easement on file with the Circuit Court Clerk's office in reference to Little Chatterdon?
If there is, I am unaware of it. Those are private agreements in which our department is not involved in. An amendment to that agreement would not come through my department.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Bush?
So my position would be, Madam Chair, that I would put this back on the applicant to provide such documentation and letters of support from all the neighbors. And if that could be provided, if we could then revisit that at the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So you do not want to, you want to keep it at the Board of Supervisor level?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just so we're clear. Thank you. Ms. Bender?
I have a few questions. Well, like Mr. Bush, I live on a road like this. And I had asked Ms. Hall a long time ago for more clarification. She mentioned to me that technically I live on a subdivision, but not based on the Chesapeake Bay Act. And would this fall in that? Because the Chesapeake Bay Act changed a lot of things, right? With conforming roads and non-conforming roads.
So this is not, Chesapeake Bay may have played a very small portion of it. However, once upon a time before I was here, private gravel roads proposed a problem in King George County. We had a lot of private gravel roads that were not maintained. People continually subdivide on them. And therefore, that text amendment of this access standard was put in play so that it gives you a number of which they don't want to go over for private roads. Therefore, having that V-dot state-maintained requirement.
Would that also, if an agreement was made by the landowners, and I'm just asking this for clarification. Mr. Britton might have to clarify this a little more. Is even if there was an agreement, they would have to bring it up to V-dot standards, correct?
Correct. Our ordinance says that they have exceeded the amount of access. If you notice, the blue lines is where the non-state-maintained starts. And every one of the properties in orange could possibly divide, should they come and apply for the same exception as Mr. Norford.
So it would open that up to lots of possible exceptions? And also, they would have to bring it, agree to bring it up to V-dot standards?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So you would be opening the door for further exemptions, which would be a shared subdivision issue, essentially. And then if you would have to either amend the ordinance to allow for private road gravel access standards that don't have to meet V-dot standards, and that would open up a large floodgate of subdivision possibilities.
And I know when we talked about, and part of the reason we're redoing our zoning and subdivision all at the same time is because it makes sense to do it and not piecemealing it. And so the suggestion, kind of to bring it back to the Planning Commission, would piecemeal it again instead of...
It would piecemeal it again. And I think the question that the board should ask themselves, is this something that the board wants to do? Do we want to have numerous minor subdivisions along narrow gravel private roads in which previously posed a problem in King George County?
Right. And if you look at things about proper planning and ordinances for the future, that's not a thing they tell you. It's even in our CIP that's frowned upon for now, and that happened in Spotsy a lot. So, and they kind of got these little roads with congestion. But you answered all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill?
So the total property size is 6.68 acres. So they're going to put three homes, well, two more, but three. So there'd be a little over two-plus acres per lot. They would just divide it up kind of evenly?
So the minimum lot size in A-2 is two acres? And they would beat that threshold? The access standards is what's preventing this division?
And how far is that off of the water, do we know?
Of the lots off of the water? This is the Potomac River right here, sir.
So it's a long, skinny lot?
Yes, sir.
So there would be two more out towards the road?
So this is Mr. Norford's existing waterfront home here. He's proposing two more divisions.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Granger.
I don't have any questions, but I don't like the idea of us circumnavigating our own ordinances. I'll just be honest, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. I don't have any questions. I do understand, Mr. Norford, where you're coming from. I don't like the fact that there seem to have been many other minor subdivisions in that area in the past that didn't have to... I'm just not, I'm not understanding that.
That was prior to the text amendment.
It was prior to 1998 or 2002?
I believe that the access standards was amended late '90s, early 2000s. I don't have that exact date right this second. But it was many years ago.
However, I do agree with Mr. Granger. I don't care for the idea of circumventing the ordinance to try to make this happen. Will of the board?
You asking for a motion or just for us to discuss it?
I'll entertain further discussion.
I was just asking. I know Mr. Bush put purples up there, so I didn't, I don't know if I really understand where Ms. Bender or Mr. Stonehill stand in regards to what they feel, if they would like to wait and see information to consider or if they want to make a decision tonight.
I feel for the applicant, but I think if we go ahead and change this, if they're not going to update the road to V-dot standards, that we're going to open up a big can of worms for anybody that wants to do this in the future, plus that piece of land that's down there anyways. I've been down there. It's tight on a good day. I can't imagine putting more houses. And if we didn't, if we allowed this at the end of the road there, then that whole neighborhood there can then subdivide. And we get that, we start that snowball rolling throughout the county. So anybody that has six acres of land or, you know, can start subdividing homes on these private roads. So, I mean, I feel for you, sir, but I can't see you moving forward with this.
Ms. Bender?
I agree. I've had a couple of these issues come up in my own district in Shiloh, and it was a no. And I understand the whole V-dot standards and making sure that the roads are safe. And I would have to say no, but I do, I don't understand, but it is a hardship.
So I'm looking at the parcel detail report, and it says, "Year built 1998, year sold 2014." Do you know anything about the history of the property, Ms. Hall?
I would have to defer to Mr. Norford.
So that's what I'm about to do. Thank you. Mr. Norford, could you take the podium next, please, sir? So I pulled up your parcel on GIS, and I click on parcel detail. And it has your parcel number and your name, and I would assume your wife's name, address, the tract and the acreage, and the land value improvements, total property value. But it says, "Year built 1998, year sold 2014." When, sir, did you take, come into possession of the property?
In 1995. Just when I first purchased the property. And then we built...
Built later.
All right. Well, we built during 1997 and 1998. There's been no sale of anything. And it wasn't my intention to put houses on the property. It's for purposes of future planning for my children sometime into the future. I'm not going to do anything with it.
But, so you personally are not going to put dwellings on the property, but that doesn't mean that one of your heirs might not... Because my question then is, why else would you subdivide, do a minor subdivision of this parcel?
Well, again, it was for estate planning.
Okay, thank you.
But me personally, not building any more houses.
I get that you personally. Thank you. You can have a seat. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Mr. Bush, I think we left off with you. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that was one of my questions, was the ownership. And thank you for the answer. 1995, 26 years ago. So I understand what everybody's saying about our own ordinances. But in all honesty, we recognize that our ordinances are cumbersome. And a special exception is something that should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So I understand that the implications may play into other things, but it's our job to be able to discern and use discernment in that process on a case-by-case basis. Being this was 26 years ago. This isn't somebody who just came in three years ago, bought this property. There's an opportunity, hot market, will subdivide, it makes money. This is someone who's doing estate planning for property that he's had for 26 years. And I think if an agreement, again, I'm of the position to where I want to know how does this impact your neighbors? Thus, going back to, I would like to see the agreement for the drive with all the adjacent neighbors. And if there's no objection by them, I would like to revisit this. But again, whatever the board decides, but that's my position, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Anything further? Ms. Bender?
Just wanted clarification. But they would have to bring it up to V-dot standards. So they would have to share the cost of bringing that road up to V-dot standards.
I would argue that, saying that the V-dot standards is something that is in our ordinance, but is not a state code issue. That's a King George County ordinance, which is why I said that if they have an agreement between the neighbors on a single-lane gravel road that everyone has to maintain and is agreed to utilize, if the neighbors are in fact made aware, there will be three more parcels down the road, you are going to have three more neighbors. If they are fine with that and they have no objection, then I don't see why we would enforce the V-dot standards, because that length, I mean, that's why I'm not doing my driveway. The cost is ridiculous. There's no way to be able to do that. So I think that's something that is county-level. So I wouldn't be in favor of enforcing the, bringing it up to V-dot standards. Now, this is a special exception, something that we debate and we look at. And I have no problem with working with a citizen who's owned something 26 years. Maybe there could be negotiations. Well, maybe you need to expand the road. It could still be gravel or whatever, but maybe it needs to be two lanes wide or something to that effect, you know? I don't think it needs to be matter-of-fact, because this is the ordinance that we have. I understand why the Planning Commission made their recommendation. I understand why Heather's office made their recommendation. That's the ordinance. But when someone's asking for a special exception, they're coming to us to be able to look at it. And it's a special exception. That's all I'm saying. I'd like to work with it.
So, hold on, Ms. Bender. So, Mr. Bush, the problem I have with that argument is it is not a special exception. Sir, if you read the board report, it is a subdivision ordinance exception request.
Okay.
So, hold on. So we are being asked, request for an exception from the requirements of Article 4 of the, per nine, access standards, per 9.1 of the King George County subdivision ordinance. We are being asked to vacate our own ordinance. And there is a big difference between that...
I see what you're saying now.
And a special exception permit, which you file an application to do that, and there is a process, and there are certain things you can file for. This is completely different.
I understand.
So for me, I'm sorry, I just can't go there.
I would like to entertain the exception, not special exception, exception. Thank you.
Ms. Bender, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I did have a counterpoint.
You summed up. I would have said it a little differently, but I agree with you, because then this opens up the floodgates for a lot of other and ones we've denied in the past.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to deny case number 21-07-SE01 as the application does not meet the requirements for an exception per 9.1 of the King George County subdivision ordinance.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries for one. Let the record show, Mr. Bush voted nay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norford, for coming out this evening. All right, next item, 10-05, Department of Finance, request to execute a goods services agreement for King George County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services boat. Ms. Turner here on behalf of the Department of Finance, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Britton. I'm Angela Turner, Department Specialist. Request to execute a goods services agreement for the King George County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services boat. I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to 799200, ONT Inc., doing business as Connor Industries for King George County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services boat in the amount of $116,502, and authorize the county administrator to execute a goods services agreement subject to approval by the county attorney. King George County Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services is in need of replacing its current boat two and to acquire a fire rescue boat that is designed and capable of a fire and rescue mission. The new fire rescue boat will replace the current 1989 Warcraft Center Consul fishing model boat, which has been plagued with mechanical issues and lacks operational abilities. The new fire rescue boat will be designed for use in both the Potomac and Rappahannock River and will have fire suppression capabilities with the use of a mounted 500 GPM pump and will have an assortment of designs to better enable maritime rescue efforts. This new fire rescue boat will be an important asset to have in order to respond to an increasing amount of calls on both rivers due to increase of boaters, kayakers, swimmers, et cetera. Funding will be used from 100% of grant fund programs to include the Virginia Department of Fire Programs Aids to Locality, Office of Emergency Medical Services, For Life, $29,364.40, Virginia Department of Fire Programs Aids to Localities, On September 13, 2021, bids were received and publicly opened via go-to meeting for King George County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. On September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, bids were received and publicly opened via go-to meeting for King George County Fire Rescue and Emergency Services boat. A total of two bids were received. The low bid was submitted by seven nine nine two zero zero O N T Inc. Doing business as Connor Industries. County staff have completed and reviewed the bids and have determined that the low bidder is qualified, responsible, and responsive contractor. The bid amount is one hundred sixteen thousand five hundred two dollars. And we have Chief Moody here, present this evening, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any questions for members for Ms. Turner? Mr. Granger?
Uh, yes ma'am, thank you, Ms. Turner, thank you. So it's a hundred percent grant funds, is this, uh, do we have to allocate the dollars from like the general fund and then it's reimbursed to us? Or do we already have the grant dollars in, in-house right now and it's available? Okay, I see the heading out from Chief Moody, so I take that. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I had, but thank you.
Mr. Stonehill?
I talked to Chief about this boat, it's, um, well, there's no perfect boat, but this is a whole lot better than we have right now. And, uh, it's, when you go into detail and you look at the web, it, it's hard to look at on this, but if you go into their website and look at the boat and look at comments of other things, it's a, it's a heck of a rig, which will definitely, uh, help the fire department. So it's great that it's all paid for.
Thank you. Ms. Bender?
I'm good with it. I, I know it's very important to have a, a boat that, you know, for all the calls we have on the river to rescue our citizens if they're in trouble, so I think it's important.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
Long time comment. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I'm assuming, Chief, this was, uh, these grants were found by your hard-working grant writer over there at Company One?
Yes, ma'am, uh, absolutely. We've, um, this has been on the radar screen for quite a while. Uh, we have had a need for it. I, I think it's no secret that, you know, we're seeing more activity on the rivers. And it's not just the Potomac River, it's the Rappahannock, you know, we've had more public boat, uh, landings. And with that comes more people and more boaters, uh, more nine-one-one calls. But, uh, we're, we're very blessed, uh, to have not one penny of general fund, uh, tax dollar, local tax dollar that will go to support this. So, um, it, it's a win-win, a win for our department, win for the community. I actually put together a few slides, I can go through some pictures because I know, um, uh, you know, if, if you got, um, if you would like me to.
Can you just email the, your presentation to us? Because I think we can all see where this one's going. I don't think we need to belabor it any further. So congratulations, thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend the, that the authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to seventy-nine nine two zero zero O N T Inc. Doing business as Connor Industries for King George Fire Rescue and Emergency Services boat in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred two dollars, no cents. And authorize the county administrator to execute a goods and service agreement, subject to approval by the county attorney.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Turner. All right, next item, ten zero six, Department of Finance. Authorize a transfer in the Department of Social Services Public Assistance Fiscal Year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget from departments to cover the deficit in the budget line. Ms. Hahn?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I come before you tonight, um, to ask you to authorize the county administrator to transfer funds from department budgets to the C, oops. That's an error in that, it should be to the Public Assistance, Department of Social Services line in the amount of three hundred and nine, six ninety-five dollars and ten cents for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The appropriated budget for that line was two hundred and fifty thousand, but the expenditures for last year were five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ten cents, resulting in the, the difference of three hundred and nine, six ninety-five and ten cents.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Questions? Mr. Granger?
Uh, yes, just in regards to the recommended action, you said it was not the CSA, it's the Social Services, Department of Social Services?
Department of Social Services Public Assistance.
Public Assistance.
Yeah. And I follow those for that.
No, it's okay, I just want to make sure I get it right.
Mr. Stonehill?
No questions.
Ms. Bender? Mr. Bush?
No, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to transfer funds from department budgets to the Social Services Department Public Assistance Budget in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ten cents for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. All right, county administrators report. Mr. Miller?
Okay, so, um, couple items on there. The first is, we receive the correspondence from Ms. Dr. Ann Bush, questioning Ms. Jacqueline Kussman, uh, our end to be appointed to the Comprehensive Policy and Management Team. As a King George, um, Health Department Representative, so I would need a motion on that.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
Second item on there is that, uh, you recall that you, you did issue an RFP for the Ralph Bunch Building. I'm here to report that the one that we received is not a responsive, um, bidder or proposal. So I would recommend that we reject that and pursue, uh, other avenues.
Questions? Mr. Granger, Mr. Stonehill? Bender? Mr. Bush? So, I, I mean, I would like to just put it back out while we pursue other options, I would like to put it back out for like six months. And just give it some time and see if anyone comes up with anything. Can we do that, Mr. Britton?
Yes, that would require a motion. I, I think what, um, administrator is saying is that they finance and his admin have determined that it's not responsive to the RFP. If you're happy with the RFP, you can have a motion and then a vote on whether to reissue the RFP and give a date.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion as far as consensus the board would?
I move forward, I would move forward with, uh, reissuing the RFP.
Do you have a certain period of time you had in mind?
Uh, I'm fine with six months.
Okay, Mr. Stonehill, yes, Ms. Bender, yes. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I move to authorize staff to reissue the, uh, RFP for the Ralph Bunch Building for six months.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously.
The next item is just an informational item. The, uh, Dahlgren Flooding and Coastal Resiliency Meeting has finally been set, uh, October twenty-fifth. It'll be at the U M W Dahlgren Campus from five to seven. I think that Supervisor Stonehill and I have, have been talking about this and how really critically important it is to get people there, to give the opportunity for, for these folks that are putting this meeting on to hear from the, from the public and to hear, uh, concerns. And so if you know of anybody, tell them that that's what's going on. We will get something put on our website just as a reminder, um, so that we can kind of encourage people. I know that's a concern of Supervisor Stonehill.
Any questions about that? Mr. Stonehill?
Uh, no questions, but Chief, since you're right there, you make sure that you can get that on your Facebook page and website, whatever you all have as well, to help with the, getting the word out about flooding issues.
Ms. Bender? Mr. Bush? All right.
Okay, excuse me. The next item is the, uh, VACO designation of an alternate for the, from the Board of Supervisors. Uh, Ms. Cupka is the current primary, and we just need a designation of somebody for the VACO, um, liaison. Is there anybody?
So, yeah, we just need to make sure whoever obviously is planning on attending the VACO conference, but yeah, we're just looking for an alternate to have the board's proxy. Motion?
I'll motion Mr. Stonehill be that VACO designation as the vice chair.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stonehill, for agreeing to do so.
Thank you all.
The next item is, uh, just as, as, uh, Ms. Bender talked about, um, the strategic plan meeting of the GWRC. What they're trying to do is restructure, um, address a lot of the concerns that have maybe been plaguing them in the past in terms of limited interest from parts of the counties that are represented, but also represented, representation. Had a very good meeting, I think that, uh, they're moving in the right direction, the Berkeley Group is helping them with that. Um, and so, uh, I'm sure we'll get some future notices of that information, um, as they start to formalize some things. The last item on there is just a, just an informational item, we don't obviously do any spraying, but, um, we were provided with notice that, uh, the Virginia Department of Agricultural, uh, is about the spraying for gypsy moths. So any, uh, obviously folks that are in, in agriculture, um, they probably, they probably are getting that notification too, but if they, you know, do have an interest, they can contact us and we'll help them with that. But we don't obviously do anything.
Madam Chair?
So, yeah, they're like the ones that make the tent in the trees and.
I actually can, I, I grew up in New Jersey, so the gypsy moth started in Connecticut as an experiment to make a silk, perfect silkworm that went awry and they escaped from the facility. And they have, I think it was in the fifties, they have worked their way down the east coast and why they're, they're so.
Dr. Fauci worked there too.
Why they are so nasty is they, if they hit a tree three years in a row, and usually they go after pine trees, the tree dies. And they're those like big web things you see. People think they're cute caterpillars, but they're not really, but they are an oopsie.
Okay.
Man-made.
Thanks. I wish they would spray for those potato bugs, those stink bug things, they're starting to come out now, but thank you for the clarity, I greatly appreciate it.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Miller?
That is it.
All right, we, I believe we have a motion for a closed session to entertain.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene and close meeting pursuant to State Code Section two point two, three, seven, one, one, A, one for consideration, for discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for the employment for the position of county, of, uh, position of county, of the county attorney, deputy county attorney. I invite the county attorney and county administrator because they are deemed necessary and or their presence will reasonably aid the board in consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to VA Code Section two point two, three, seven, one, two, F.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, we are in closed session.
starting to come out now, but thank you for the clarity, I greatly appreciate it.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene and close meeting pursuant to state code section 2.23711A1 for consideration, for discussion and consideration of prospective candidates for the employment for the position of county, of, position of county, of the county attorney, deputy county attorney. I invite the county attorney and county administrator because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to VA code section 2.23712F.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, we are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, please each member so certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify, motion carries, we are in open session.
I move, I'm sorry, do we have something else? Just adjournment, right? I move to adjourn until October 12th at 6:30 PM at the King George Fire and Rescue Company One.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, we are adjourned.
I move to adjourn until October 12th at 6:30 PM at the King George Fire and Rescue Company One.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned.